And the snow, is the snow coming tomorrow? Does that sound right? Yeah.
It's like a freezer in there.
There's a lot of cold air comes in there too.
My builder, and he said he doesn't need any of this, but he just moved off of what he has.
Give me your other one. That's the wrong one.
But...
Added one.
The appraisal, you might have to draw something else.
And that's where, okay, I've got a list of the meetings there that I gave you.
Yeah, thank you.
That mean which, which bank?
Hey, man, give me your other one.
So, so if I was you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be a little bit different just because it's Joey with everybody. I'm just gonna get on the list here.
However you want to do it. I would talk to the guy who brings his bank, because I know now my banker's pretty comfortable with what I'm doing. So they do appraise that in the beginning.
Oh, okay.
But... You just got a feeling you're gonna want something. Because it's the first time you're going in, and you're dealing with them, I got a feeling.
But you have a large within that builder.
Well...
Probably need...
At least?
Pay delivery over.
Yeah, that's what I did, I reached out to her and asked her, well, the appraisal, what are you guys ready for, you know?
Well, and then there's the other one. Where's your builder body for it?
Oh, really?
Cause he has a hardware store, so I think he needs...
Does she know any designers?
Another shot, wouldn't it?
That's true, that would be a good idea.
Because he should be able to do the same thing that Aurora, Lumber, or Alkum would do.
Okay.
And just tell him, say, "Look, I'll go with you, but here's what I need you to do. You need to come up with a set of plans."
Okay, yeah, you're right.
I don't want to cost me no money.
Those are separate.
You're right.
And that's him getting a job.
Yeah.
And he should be willing to do that. And he probably would.
I heard about that last night.
Yep.
If you were going to...
It's a gold.
He would be taxed. Under the conspiracy of...
Would look very good changing that one.
You give Mr. Clark take care of, you give Mr. Clark take care of. Last night.
Oh, I heard.
You, Mike.
I was saying, if your dad was sitting here, Mike was sitting there.
Oh.
When I called.
You too? Oh, yeah, she told me.
Barber, I'm going.
I haven't got a cut for a few weeks either, but yeah, I go down there the past year or so.
The guy who works at Beating Buggies, that showed me like an app where you can book.
Yeah.
Were you filming thing?
No. Still on the hunt for it.
He booked, he booked five weeks out.
That's crazy.
So he's awesome. They do walk, they do walk-ins too, but he, that guy's fun.
Who's this?
A barber, his barber guy.
He books how many years?
No, five weeks.
Five weeks out.
Are you kidding me?
He's booked like for five weeks straight.
You don't go to Roxy?
I've been passing her, I've been going down these other guys down there. That's what I said, because how she wants to cut it if I go there.
There you go. I don't blame you there. You might catch her on a bad night.
She cut it for nine or 10 years, but for the past year or so, I've been going down there. That's cool.
Hey, Tony?
Yeah, it is.
All right.
Shelby?
No.
Very close.
You can walk right in.
That's what I do. Give us a minute.
Hey, Tyler?
Yeah.
Here's that memo and...
Tony, how you doing, buddy?
It's fine, Mel.
What he talks about.
I just sent that to you too. The letter.
Okay.
We do, you want to do the, talk about the RFP first, you want to do the resolution first?
I'm talking about the RFP first, then I can talk about the resolution.
Okay.
Big crap. I guess we gotta... Updated.
All right, we'll call to order the joint session between council and the board of works regarding the, the RFP that we're gonna be sending out for the Speedway proposal. I think everybody got a copy, had a chance to read it over for the weekend, and if you got any questions, we'll certainly answer them now. The goal is to, so we can get this thing sent out, advertised. So entertain any questions or additions, deletions, whatever you guys want to talk about.
I got questions.
All right.
Not too many. On page five.
All right.
Number three, conduct of business, the last sentence. Leasees shall retain 100% of the rights to concession sales and revenue generated from any concessions sold on the premises.
Uh huh.
Is that something we ought to put in there now, or is that something that should be presented to us?
Well, I think we want to make sure everybody's presenting the same thing. That's what we want to make sure that we're, we're getting back apples to apples, I think is the only thing.
Well, I guess my question there is, why are we wanting to make sure everybody presents us with the same thing?
Well, I mean, as far as the income, I mean, the money is concerned. We want to make sure that people have a, I mean, we don't want to, I mean, how are you gonna decipher against the...
Well, here's the thing, and I'll let you two know right where I'm coming from right off the bat, is, you know, I've been contacted by quite a few people that, and the city's got a lot of money in the racetrack. Everybody here knows that. The, the one thing that I have been hammered into my head, and I'm, I'm not a race fan, so I don't know a lot about things, so I just have to listen to people, and they've been coming to me. There's a lot of people that would like to see weekend events, two, three day events, and they want to know why we're not having them. We, we have the fifth best race facility in the country, and a lot of people feel like it's underutilized. So, what I think is, is, I, I don't know who's gonna walk in the door, I don't know who's gonna be interested in it, but should we be limiting what somebody is maybe wanting to present us? I don't know if you understand.
Yeah, I know, you, why not make that, you know, that might be something that somebody wanted to put in there as a...
I don't know that I want apples for apples, I just want some creativity, I want somebody to walk in the door, and, and I'm not saying that I want you guys not to run this thing, but if, if you think about what the people are asking for, is, is, is we've got millions of dollars in a racetrack over there, and people come and go, and come and go, but I've been getting told that Florence, Kentucky, which is a pit, it's packed, it draws a lot of people, and they stay in that area and spend a lot of money for two and three days. So automatically, what I'm thinking about is, is, you know, we have a little fishing tournament down here, and I see bass boats filling up our hotels. If we happen to have two or three weekend events, what's that gonna do for some of our businesses? It ain't all about the money, that's not what I'm getting at, but is the community getting the benefit that we need to get? So, that, that's my point there, is I'm...
Well, I mean, is there something in particular with this, would you want that taken out, or...
I just don't know why we would need to see it. We, maybe we list what's on the property, but if, you might be the only one that's gonna bid on this thing. I ain't sure, but whatever you present to us, and whatever that other person might present, I don't really want to tell them what to do for us, I want to hear what anybody has to say.
Okay.
Got your comment?
Yeah.
Your thoughts?
I understand what you're saying about wanting, some of these people wanting two, three day shows. Assuming on a board council, the boards want, they want an event like Eldora puts on, where they're bringing in, they're having 34 day shows, huge shows, drawing in 50 to 60,000 people. Let me just give you an example, this past summer, we had the biggest crowd ever. We had to turn people away because we were, first we went to St. Mary's, and then we went to, we had guys out in the... Turned people away. Place was packed, we were, we were, we were out of room. We didn't have the facilities or concessions, we were packed, bathrooms were overcrowded, there was no parking, there was people parking at the high school, climbing up over the levee, on the track, no parking, the ground conservancy, they were everywhere. It was a, a great disaster. It was nice to have that big of a crowd, and we've always wanted to sell it out. How many people we had at this event? And again...
Five thousand?
Just over 5,000. We seat a total of 6,000 people, and we had them everywhere. We were in a probably over 6,000 with the kids and stuff, but that's it. That's what the facilities can handle. Eldora's Speedway, for example, they have, I'm looking at over 60,000 seating capacity. It's a huge facility. They're surrounded by hundreds of acres of camping, parking, they're unlimited. Ford Speedway, they have a big show, the north south, it's huge. They seat, I think, three times the amount we seat, and they have a lot of acreage for parking and camping. The facilities cannot handle big multi-day shows. We could have, we used to have multi-day shows with bigger sanctions, and you get, you can only get what the, you can handle. And to have a big show, you have to have big payouts, big purchases, and financially, it doesn't work. And another thing we fight, when we had three day shows, two day shows, we can't do it. We have a notice of attraction on Friday nights. Once a month, we have an antique market that we have to cater to on, for some other month, so you can't have a big event, campers there, and get them out right after the races on Saturday. We do that a couple times a year, and it's a, it's a battle. So, in order to, um, multi-day shows, it takes a lot of, a lot bigger facility to do it, and to do it right. So...
Okay. Dave, you may explain, what show was it where you're selling?
My construction.
And that's not even a race?
No, it wasn't a race. Well, we have some races, but it's monster trucks, the Amusement Dobbies, uh, school races, that kind of thing. Um, every race, yeah, it's, that's the big thing, is not even a race, and...
Fun stuff.
You remember, the World Outlaws, we're at like 4,000 people, campers and camp partners, and we actually have set up like six pop-up tents, six extra ticket windows, to get, just to get people in. Um, and so I mean, like, our comfort level, with the facility being how many people, probably only 4,000.
And, and to back him up on what he said, I've heard the same thing from a couple of people about the seating capacity is, is a little bit less than we desire. And there could be some more facilities on the east side of the track, maybe.
Yeah, on the back stretch, but that's not, that's not the issue, seating, and it is, but you gotta have parking, you gotta have restory facilities, I mean, when you, when you add, you just can't add seating and expect, you know, you still have to, you gotta park it somewhere.
I don't understand the parking, because the motorcycle truck could be solved. I'll bring it up later.
Yeah.
But, but you've got parking all the way to the back, and the conservancy's never, you know, anybody running a parking off. I guess, I, I see all these big crowds, and they all want to park out front, but nobody ever wants to go to the back. Same way this people are getting lazy. Then we got, yeah, I, I don't know. I, but I still say that it, it is just something that the people, the fans, that I have talked to, have really wanted to see come here.
Yep.
And I, I just, I'm not a fan, I don't go, and I don't know, but I listen to these people.
Well, if you could get more seating than you could get portalets on those two or three events a year, could you?
Well, yeah, we already, we already utilize portalets weekly, because there's no restory facilities, there's just, uh, there's no restory facilities right by the main grandstand, so we utilize portalets our weekly. Yeah, absolutely, I mean, I, as a businessman, and, you know, believe it or not, we're in it to make money. A lot of people can't believe that, but that's what we do, but if I could have a three day show, four day show, and be profitable, absolutely, we'd love to do it. We'd love to have huge events where the place is packed, and multiple day shows, but we do the best we can with what we have. So, everybody, everybody wants, you know, a huge type of event here, and I think we have huge type of events. So we have the largest sanctions in the country. We have, if you look at our track compared to any other track, we have more sanctioning shows than any other track in the country, including Eldora. We run every, we run USAC, World Outlaws, we have monster trucks, series come in, which Eldora does, but we have rodeos, we do more sanctioning events than any other track that I know of in the country.
I was gonna ask, infrastructure wise, if you're gonna put on, say, 10 shows, multi-day shows a year, I'm talking strictly ratios, what would it take, infrastructure wise?
More parking, camping, uh, well, the biggest thing, first thing I would look at is our schedule. And that, that would be the biggest thing, is, you know, we have to, we have two weeks during the summer that we have to basically shut down for the beach fair. And then, the first time of the month, that wipes that out because of the antique market that goes on. And then, like I said, the motorcycle track, you know, we work with them. And then, that's just part of it, then you add in all other different events that are going on. Believe it or not, when they have an event at your hall, that takes up quite a bit of parking. And then, now I'm here, also, we probably may lose some of the parking with a soccer, is that, indoor soccer field or something? Is that wrong, or, I'm just hearing? It's vicious, but... That's the, I mean, we look at doing multi-day events, that's the first thing I look at and work on, and it's difficult. And then, and then you got, you know, other facilities now having bigger events, you know, Fall Fest, one of the nicest weekends of the year, typically, will go dark, support the city will fall fast, so that's a weekend that we shut down, that we could have races and big events. So, we're limited on what we do and when we do it, so there's, there's a lot that goes into it. And just to say, we can have 10, three day events, and I don't even think that's possible with the schedule and what goes on at the, at the fairgrounds and, and throughout the city and, and other races, and to get sanctions and...
Well, I was talking two day, three day is kind of a...
Two days, yeah, and we've had them, we've had them in the past, and, yeah, the people, the local people and the people that come to our events, um, they pick and choose. I'm hoping the economy gets better and people start going to both, but typically, we have them on a Friday and a Saturday. People don't come, they're gonna pick and choose, they're gonna come on Saturday when they can get there on time, and they can't afford, they can't afford two day shows for, for the most part, so. And that's what we've seen over the years, in the 10 years we've been running it, is people are picking and choosing.
Well, I guess what I'm hearing, the biggest need would be parking out of, out of anything, though, correct?
Yeah, and he's right, saying, you know, we could park them in the back, and, but that requires a lot of fencing that we don't have. It's just kind of a free for all, if anybody gets in the back, and we can't have people in the pits, the general public going through the pits and in the pits, has to be regulated, so. The editing insurance thing is, you know, actually, they crown on the fact that we don't have fencing around the pit all the time, so, but we have officers and then staff to keep it secured.
And Paul, is that what I'm hearing, you and Mario are kind of saying the same thing, that you want to explore more multi-day events, or more different sanctioning?
I, I know nothing about racing, so the sanction stuff isn't what I've been hearing so much, but the people I know have mentioned the more day races, now, it, it, like Mario said, maybe 10. I've been hearing two or three. Because, you know, now, what I, I think that, that if we have some more people that show up and want to price this, I do believe he's not gonna be alone, because from what I've been hearing so far, everybody that I've talked to has mentioned camping facilities. I have heard about the pits needing to be fenced in somehow or another, that people say that could be a big problem, so I have heard that. But, I, I guess what I would like to put out there somehow, and I don't know how we could do it, is, is if we're gonna do this, we, we, if you've been there 10 years, we need to know what's wrong with our facility. I'm sitting here hearing that it's top five in the country, but from everybody I talked to, right at the same time, they're telling me it's a top five racetrack, or telling me everything is wrong with it. So, we need to know what to do, because I just, I just feel like it's a commodity that we're not getting the most out of. I mean, Mario, you're, you're...
Well, I was using 10, just an arbitrary number out there. I mean, you probably put on three, two day shows now, maybe, on the race side?
We don't do any multi-day shows.
There's none at all on the schedule?
No. No. Twenty-three events, 24.
Can you, you have mentioned something to call in, but something I'm always proud of, and I'm always proud of people, like our big shows, and the World Outlaws, and there's so many drivers that come to the World Outlaws. Back in the oil and the international. And we're doing pre-sale for all of these events, and last year, and here, we spent 32 states in a lot of countries. The people are coming to town, they're paying more than one day. I mean, we're really proud of that, but even though we're not having these two day events, a lot of the people that can't afford a travel, they're still coming to town and spending time, two or three days. And we have this personal show crew to the casino all the time, for our campers that come down. I come in a nice van, and it's not just five or six people, I mean, you know, Outlaws, but east side, I mean, it's, I'd say probably 60,000 crowd is coming from over 100 miles. I don't, you know, we're not missing out on that 100%, because we're not having the day shows. There's no traffic.
Well, this particular facility, I mean, as promoter, is 5,000 the cap that it's always gonna be there, or is there room to grow and make the marketing grow with it?
There's always room.
Yes.
I'd say, you know, what a lot of people don't understand, is we have a beautiful, huge facility, and we have the top five facility, but it also takes a lot of money to operate that facility. A USAC show, United States Auto Club, we pay USAC $50,000 for that one, and that's just USAC, that's not over, it's payroll every time. That's a lot of money, 78,000. And so when you're adding another day, additional advertising, and then Mother Nature shows up, and then we pay the whole year. And that is huge, because you're adding, growing, you're spending forever, and you're going with it. You know, it's kind of 22, you know, how much, how much can you spend to grow, and how much are you gonna gain off of it?
It's like your boat, the boat races we have here, you know, why wouldn't you do a three day boat show? The boat races for three days or two days, it's probably because a lot to do with it costs a lot of money to be on. The sanctioning's expensive, so, I mean, that's kind of the same thing as, you know, you, like, it's important to make money. Also, we're not in it just to put on big shows and lose money. This is a, a business, and that's how we run it, like a business. So when we had, in the past, have tried, we tried two day, multi-day shows, we lost a lot of money.
And I, and I agree, I agree, nobody, you know, everybody's out, you know, doing something because it's not, because they just enjoy it all the time, it, you know, you gotta make a little money.
And I do do it because I enjoy it.
I think what, what the takeaway from this would be though, for you guys, Dave, is, it's obvious, it sounds like some people aren't happy with what, so I think, you know, it's an opportunity, you know, you gotta look at it as an opportunity to maybe do something a little different, maybe. And I think that putting the RFP out there is gonna get, you know, if, if there's other people that are interested, they'll come forward.
And, and there might not be.
You know, but... And if there isn't, you know, there's a... You've been there 10 years, and, and maybe we don't have any money for the racetrack. That's a possibility, maybe we don't want to put anything in it. We're not getting anything out of it, we're, we're wearing it out, and we're not seeing a whole lot of return for it. So, I guess my question is, is if, if we were to put a little bit aside, to put some money in the racetrack, is there a possibility, if we could do a few things, that would help the matter out a little bit? Camping over there, I have went over, because the place gets packed. If there's softball on the next day, and, and I go over and look, and one time, I counted 111 campers over there. Between the tents and the, I mean, it was, it's kind of a free for all, you get in there and you get what you can get. Maybe there are things we could do to make it better. It seems to me like that this town and this area is looking for some draws. Uh, if, if we could make it a little bit better, I don't know if that's a bad thing, but I'm an expert, I don't know what to do. I just am listening to the people. And none of them said they didn't want you to run the racetrack, they're all just comparing and giving suggestions. And I've sit here now for, for eight years, and every time this comes up, there's never been a conversation like this. So, we just need to know from the people that know the most what we need, you know? And, and I think that there could be a lot of good to come out of this one where, you know, you have it.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, and, you know, we're always looking for feedback, and, and what do we need to make, have bigger shows and bigger events, and, you know, would be more space, more space to park, more space, you know, more restrooms, we can, we have a portalet, but that's a huge expense, what do we spend a year on? Yeah, seven. Yeah, and, and for you to say, you know, I don't know if you know what we pay you for the facilities, but, you know, you say the city's not getting anything out of it, we're paying a lot of money back to the city for the use of the facilities upwards, that, I think, I know, it is a bargain for the facilities we have, it is a bargain, but we're paying, I think we've already paid upwards to a million dollars back to the city for the facilities we're leasing. So it's, it's, we do pay a lot of money back to the city on that end, and so, I, I just, I don't know if you knew that, what we pay exactly, but it's a lot of money that is coming back to the city.
Any conversation, I've never been involved in a conversation, the only thing I ever knew was, you come in and we sponsor a race or something. I ever knew was, is you come in and we sponsor a race or something. That's the only thing I know about the financial end of the racetrack.
No, at least, we, I think it's right around seventy thousand dollars a year, but, give or take, what, how many events we have, we don't pay if we get hanged out. But, um, so, yeah, it's upwards of seventy thousand a year we're paying for the lease, right, average. So, I was, I was kinda surprised that you didn't know that, really. I, I, I'm glad you do now, because I, you know, it's been bad when we just come in asking for sponsorship and you didn't know that we were actually paying. So, and that's actually, when we did the sponsorship, it was just a credit. We didn't, nobody cut us, we didn't get a check cut from the city. They just credited us through our, uh, our lease agreement, which works out better, so.
Yeah.
Dave?
Yeah.
Uh, how many more campers could you get in there if the city improved the electrical system, put in the stand-up houses, their plug, and back to that part of it?
Uh, we could, yeah, but the amount is unlimited. Oh, yeah, as long as you put it, you know, it, but shows, like, five shows would draw a lot of campers. Um, like you said, maybe a hundred is a big, and honestly, when I see a lot of campers, that's great that they're there. Um, back in my head, I'll think, no, they're taking up a lot of parking. So, I, I'd rather see cars, because, uh, they don't take, you know, campers take up ten parking spots for cars, so, and they usually take up the prime parking areas in the main midway, so...
And you see a lot of race facilities, Mel, that don't even have outlets or services for the motorhomes, you know?
Yeah, and they have, most of them come here like, oh, my gosh, we got electric, who do we pay? And, um, it's, it's, they, they like that and they love coming here because of that. And it's a nice area to camp for them, so, um...
But that's not the norm for, for race facilities to, unless you're at a NASCAR facility, uh, your truck stuff is kinda like turn your generator on and back out that way. Um, I think there's some options still, but, like, keep your parking to be the, the growth center there. I mean, right now, in the interim period of Hollywood getting rid of the parking up there, I mean, there's a ton of parking. I'm sure we can negotiate, uh, with Hollywood on the vacant lots up there at this time. As a matter of fact, there's probably something work out through Conservancy slash Hollywood City where we can actually, um, have ingress and egress on that back waterway there. In other words, you point it off, then you come through the back here of that fencing. You know, we can, I think we, uh, temporary panels can be used to fence off that old pit area if that's really an issue. Uh, who would be responsible, I don't know, but I'm just saying that, that's not a big issue. At least they would be movable and...
We still haven't seen people, right? I mean, that's, that's a deterrent right now, right? Is that a, uh...
Like I said, yeah, we had six thousand, we were, that, that's what we, there's, there's six thousand people.
So, when you, when you talk about adding, okay, if, if you're gonna add bleachers, then you have to add restroom facilities, then you're gonna have to add parking. Then you, I mean, there's, it's a combination of things. I think if you add one, you can get them all, because otherwise you're not gonna have the right amount of facilities, the right amount of people. Um, but, in reference to the RFP, though, I think, um, I mean, it is what it is right now. I mean, we can't just put bleachers in tomorrow, you know, or whatever. But the thing is, is, um, I, I think, you know, um, you come back, you come back with your best foot forward and, and I guess we're gonna see if there's any other interest. But, um, and like Paul said, there may not be. Nobody's contacted me, so...
Yeah, I just want you to know, though, you know, if somebody comes in here, um, that's interested and is gonna issue, uh, multi-day shows, that, you know, you're gonna have to have your ducks, you know, on a multi-day show here. Um, you're gonna have to have a sanction to do it, um, to the people, because that's what it takes, is a sanction to bring drop people in for a, uh, for a show, um, be it the World Outlaws or whatever. But, if I called the World Outlaws, any of you call the World Outlaws tomorrow and say, hey, we wanna have a three-day show, and we can do it the second week of July, we're gonna laugh at you. The World Outlaws run pretty much every day of the week, all summer. They're not gonna blow the, it took us years to get a show, and, uh, I think they kinda only was gonna give us a show on Memorial Day on Mondays, because, um, they didn't think it would work for us, because they, they have a company, it's called SLS, that does most of their shows and puts their shows and racetracks well. They, uh, they go, they hold a show on a Monday after the 500, and, uh, they really didn't think it would work. And, uh, we've made it very successful over the years. So, uh, but that's, you know, to get a two-day, two-day show, a two-day show even, um, it's really, it's really hard to get a scheduling. And, uh, you know, these sanctions just don't, they're not just sitting around waiting for you to call them. They, we have to get in. And that's why we're kind of on the, they've gone here to get, um, lease, lease finalized ahead of time. And that's because they, they do, they're here to advance on their scheduling, so, um, it's, scheduling's a, it gets part of it also, and with the parking and everything else. But there's a whole lot of things that gotta be, um, in place to make stuff happen.
Well, and what if, I mean, what if our, boil everything down, and our primary concern is just having, you know, two-day races. You know, what if, uh, as part of your presentation and as part of our RFP, we said, you know, we want someone to come in and do basically what you guys are doing, but we want three two-days, two-day events a year. Um, I mean, what would need to happen for, for that to be possible from your end? If you had to present us, you know, how that could work?
Yeah, that would be, you know, it's something we can make happen if we had the backing of maybe the city, or, um, you know, we have to make sure that we close the motorcycle track down that weekend. We have to make sure that Agger Hall's not rounded out that weekend.
And those are things that we can help you with. I mean, we can help you with those kind of things.
Yeah, yes. Um, you know, and the bigger facilities, the bathrooms and, um, you know, the concessions and, um, you know, we can, we can do some work sessions and discuss this further. I mean, there's lists, and I can make up some lists of things that we need to make, things like that happen, but...
Sounds like that's how we could learn a little bit more about, you know, what we're looking for.
And we give, you know, it bothers me, because we send out to all the council, um, a lot, a lot of every, everyone who's on, sitting up, we think about tickets, um, to all of you. And, uh, you know, really, it would really make me happy if you'd come down and see some of the events we put on. I know, you've never been, come down on a Saturday, and I know a lot of people are busy on Saturdays, but, um, I would, that's why we do that, so you can first hand come out and see the facilities and see an event and see how it goes on. And, um, I hope to make advantage of it this year, if you haven't in the past.
Yeah, I, I come about three times a year. I know about the concession problems. The kids always wanna go there about five, five times per race.
The bottom line is, we obviously wanna stay there. We spent the last ten years building relationships, you know?
Hey, Kim, would you go up to the mic for the picks up on recording? Sorry about that.
You're fine.
Bottom line is, we, we spent the last ten years building relationships, you know, with corporations and groups and sponsors and, you know, the city and everybody. We obviously wanna stay there and work with the city of Lawrenceburg. And, uh, you know, we've always tried to be the quiet kids. We try not to ask for much, you know? I mean, there's always people in here asking for, you know, time after time, you know? We don't have a fence. We never really ask for one, 'cause we know it's a huge expense, and we just try and do the best with what we have down there. Um, so, you know, it's really just all about, you know, all of us communicating. And you want something, you know, you let us know and we'll do our best to make it happen. That's what I'm...
That's fair.
The only other question I got, Kelly, or Jay, one of them, um, page...
Page.
Permissions must be prepared using, uh, eight-and-a-half by eleven paper format, submitted in person or electronically. Now, it, my question is, is if we put this out, are, are we gonna let these guys make a presentation, or is, is just the paperwork gonna be their presentation?
They'll present. They'll get the paperwork to us first, right, Kelly?
Yes.
And then, then we'll invite them in.
Everybody'd have an opportunity to present.
So, are we also going to, for instance, right now, would, would, uh, will they have a time slot, and then we'll do another date for another person, or how will all that work?
Well, we'll figure that out based upon the amount of people we get back.
Okay.
All right. But, you know, I, I would envision, I mean, it could be two a night or something. I, I don't know, whatever, whatever timeframe we might need, but it just depends if we get multiples back, I, I would think.
Well, and the reason why I'm bringing it up is because when we, you know, when we tried to do the motorcycle track over there this year, it turned into a free-for-all. Um, we did not do that right at all. Um, so, I would like for everybody, when they walk in, to be in a good, comfortable atmosphere and be, uh, totally different than what I witnessed about three months ago.
Oh. Yeah. Any other comments up here? Tony, you're off the quiet. Been a busy day or something?
I'm just listening.
Oh.
Hey, Kelly, I got one thing. I, and this is, I don't know that it would have to be anything or not, but on, on page five again, number two.
What page?
Five, uh, number two.
Uh-huh.
It says, "At least you shall guarantee at least twenty weekends of racing per year." Uh, should there be a mechanism of some kind, or some type of discussion item there that, uh, I mean, we live in southeastern Indiana, it, it could rain ten weeks in a row.
Yeah, that's been, that's discussed. I mean, they, they, nobody's been, I mean, we know that you can't force a race to happen. I mean, there's only so many weekends a year, so...
I mean, I'm just saying, should there be any kind of language in there that says, uh, due to uncertain, you know, unforeseen circumstances with weather or something, there's gonna be some type of talk about it?
Yeah, we can. I mean, it's...
I think that's probably more suited for the contract, once you find out.
Yeah, this is just the proposal, but, yeah, I mean, once you get a contract with the promoter, I mean, we can do that. I think we even covered that. I mean, in our contract, Moot, I think we, we covered that as well. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, can't, can't depend on other nature around here, that's for sure. Okay.
And the only other thing I'd have is, is on page ten, if one of you guys could explain your grading, so I understand this better. Um, is that how we're gonna choose this?
I think this is pretty much a standard, uh, standard worksheet for, is what we, we use for most all, uh, all bids.
And this is something I came up with just to give us, something to hold on to. All you guys would have it while everyone's presenting, and you can make notes and kinda score them, but, uh, it's not, you know, controlling of your decision. This is just a way to keep track of certain areas in which they impress you. You can kinda take notes in each section, and there's just a way to have a rating system so that, you know, you can compare and contrast. If we have a bunch of applicants in, this would be a good way to keep track of everybody and what everyone thought of each one.
This would be for your personal use, Paul?
Mm-hmm.
By all means, it doesn't dictate who you vote for.
And when we put this out, done any research on, uh, maybe just gonna run it from your own press, gonna, what, how, how...
I thought we already talked about that, didn't we? Something like, we, we said Lexington, Louisville...
We just mentioned that we were gonna, uh, try to do a pretty good job of it, and that's my question, if, if we thought about what we are gonna do.
Okay. I haven't really talked to anybody, thought much more about it, but, I mean, I think we hit those markets and, unless you have other, I mean, listen, listen, we're, you know, wherever, it's your guys' proposal, and if, if you guys want us to hit a certain market, we'll hit a certain market. We, we got, you know, opt, we can get it out to the market, however you guys want it to be done.
No problem. No.
Okay. Next item is, uh, we gonna do the resolution?
Um, excuse me. The resolution is what is required by statute to dispose of the racetrack in alternative means. Typically with a lease agreement, uh, standardize the lease agreement, uh, the requirement would be that the rental value would be appraised in the exact same way that a purchase value would be appraised. However, with specialty, um, venues such as a racetrack, it would be difficult, if not impossible, to, uh, get a true appraisal of what the rental value should be. And in addition to that, we do want some more direction and control over, uh, exactly who has awarded the lease. And so, this resolution, uh, conforms to Indiana code and allows us to dispose of the lease through an RFP rather than, uh, an appraisal and bid method.
At the time that it needs to be done, right?
At the time it needs to be done. So, we don't have to do this in a hypothesis.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is, uh, just for informational purposes.
Oh, okay.
This is, uh, what allows us to dispose of it in this way, which is a way that, uh, other cities have handled leases like this, and it's a preferable way to do it.
Okay. Any other discussion, guys, up here? Any comments from the audience? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Ooh.
Second?
Second.
Paws in favor?
Yeah.
Oppose? Motion will carry. Council meeting at six o'clock. Board of Works.
These are the two, uh, leading contracts. Two leading contracts. I was high-level like Greg.
...